All right, it is one o'clock. This is the special meeting of the Fresh Waterways Advisory Board. It's Monday, June 15th. The meeting is being held at the Ocean Shores Library. Uh, roll call, Connie Clifford, Jeff Owen, James P., Janet Grant, Jay Bosch,
Dave Royce, Jim Fitzgerald.
Um, so we need a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Meeting agenda, perfect. Second?
A second.
All in favor? And then we need a motion to approve the meeting minute from the meeting on May 5th that I created. You're welcome.
I recommend we approve them.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Perfect. Uh, public communication. Anybody in the room have a public comment? No. Jane, you're online. Do you have a public comment? Well?
Yes, good afternoon to everyone.
Thank you, Jane. All right, first order of new business is the election of the board president. So the president, I emailed this to you guys, but the president, um, leads the meetings like what I'm doing right now, uh, helps build the agenda by sending agenda topics to the clerk's office, and they're the main point of contact between the city and the board. So do we have a nomination for president?
I want to nominate Dave Royce.
We have a second to that nomination. Any other nominations? Or would we just like to vote? Cause we can do either. All right, let's go to a vote. Who would lie or let's, all in favor of, uh, Dave Royce being board president?
Hi.
How's you doing? All right. Uh, so then we have vice presidents who assist the president and assume the president's duties in their absence. Do we have a nomination for vice president?
Connie.
Connie.
Well, that sounds like a first and a second. All in favor of Connie? Uh, and then, then we have the secretary. Secretary takes the meeting minutes. I've already provided you guys with examples and a template, so it should be super easy. Um, nomination for secretary.
Yeah.
Jeff Owen?
I decline. I don't have any resources. I'm, I, I don't do computer stuff at all. But thank you.
Anybody else? Oh. James P.? A second for James P.?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor for James P.? Okay. Next, we have a discussion led by Becky.
Just fast, okay. Yeah. So we are going to do assignments. Um, the Parks Board has, everybody that is on the board is assigned a different park, uh, a couple parks actually, cause we have some, and before they come to the Parks Board meeting, they'll get, they'll go and look at their parks and, um, then at the meeting, give a report on how their parks look, what kind of maintenance they may recommend. So we want to do the same thing with the Fresh Waterways Advisory Committee, and we haven't done that in the past, so this is new. But I think it's going to be really beneficial, especially right now going into the summer months. Um, so we, obviously you guys all know how many canals, um, and lake area that we have, so it could be a little bit overwhelming. We've definitely got more space here than the parks. Does anybody, like, how do you guys want to do it? Because I don't want to just say, these are your areas, these are your areas. Cause I know you all live on the canals. Some of you live on the same canals. We don't want to overlap. How would you guys like to delegate and determine who has what areas of the water?
I think that as our group, we probably need to sit down and look at the map and make a decision that bring it up at a later meeting of the next meeting.
That's what I was thinking too.
Is what we want to do. Cause I can, I can tell you, I mean, it is a large area and I, I boat around everywhere, so. To do it before each meeting to go look at an area if you're designing, it, it could be really difficult. Going to the parks, you know, you just walk in the park and see what it is. I'm going to check them at the canals. Um, you have to get on a boat, go look, see what's going on, and do that.
And it doesn't have to be the day of either, like.
No, I'm saying.
Between meetings, yeah.
Yeah.
And if I'm out fishing, I'll, I, I look around and see stuff. So I mean, I reported to Scott and Nicole about a pontoon boat that's half submerged. Still is half submerged.
It's still. It is.
Yes.
Oh, they didn't come get it?
Nope.
Oh.
Still in the water.
She, uh, she said she would get it that weekend.
I know she didn't.
So I mean, it's just. Then you pull it right up onto.
There's a launch right there.
On their launch right there.
We went, we went out, we drove over there and we started to walk out and we found out that there was a way that just with, you know, a trailer or a.
Oh, I can, I can pull it out with my Jeep.
We can pull it out, but.
Something that they need to.
I thought it was, they were going to come do it.
You guys want to do it, then just go ahead.
We can do it. Yeah.
He has, one of the pontoons is underwater, the other one is on top of the one, and if it goes down, that's where the gas can is, and that's where the gas will get in the water, so.
We can help you.
Yeah, I have a, a large Maury line from an aircraft carrier that can hook onto it and pull it out. It ain't going to break it.
Fifty foot chain.
That's a new guy here.
I think.
I mean, monitoring particular.
As you're looking at, you know, say for instance, you had the, uh, shallows and maybe Lake Menard, because our shallows runs into Lake Menard. If you have those two areas, just, if you don't have a boat, you can even go, um, just to the shoreline someplace where there may be some sort of public access. And I'll send you guys pictures too of toxic, the toxic algae, because I'm going to send you all kits. We'll talk about that in a minute too. Um, but you know, take a sample if you think that there's the algae in the water. If you see weeds growing, take a picture. You can send me the picture and then we can talk about it. Um, you know, things like that, just so that we can. I know. And we were hoping that Herrera would, uh, would consent to showing us how to test different things in the water.
Hot areas.
Yeah.
Where they put in actual, uh, samples.
They have, they're on the lake.
So you get an overall picture, right?
Yeah, yeah. And that's not something that, there's just, we can't do all kinds of testing because we can't run the reports, right? But for the algae, the instructions are in the box and it's, it's really, it's, it's quite simple. And this is the most harmful thing that happens really in our, in our lakes and canals and can make people really sick. So this is the most important thing for us to keep a, a handle on. And it just happened so fast and we can control it and get rid of it. Um, I think easier than some of the weeds that are in there too.
Anybody that doesn't have a boat needs to go out. I, I make myself available. I'm out every other day, if not more often than that, and then I go everywhere. So I know these canals pretty well.
And I'll send you all a PDF copy of that map. Just to help.
Um, I'm going to see if the county will send me enough of these for everybody to have two, but if, I'm going to start with two and then talk them down. If they're like, no, no, we can't send you that many, um, then at least I'll try to get everybody one. And, um, the instructions are, you know, freeze the ice kit first and then, um, you'll have a tracking number on the box that this comes in. It's a tracking number and the information where to send it back. It says, wear protective gloves, don't skim the water surface. It tells you where to skim and how deep. It's not very deep. Um, and using a permanent marker to mark, date, time, the water body name, your name, and the sample tracking number that was on the box. And there's, it's actually, it's all on the bottle. I just realized that when I turned it around. And, uh, then you'll overnight ship it to FedEx. You can give it to me and I can overnight ship it for you. Um, and then they, they request, they've been requesting that samples are sent in for them to test on Wednesdays. At this point, they aren't getting many samples in, because there's not a lot of the toxic algae out there. So they're staffing mostly to do their testing on Wednesdays. So we would want to plan to do the sample on a, on a Tuesday or something like that. If you saw it, um, you know, Friday, maybe go back out on a, on a Monday or Tuesday.
The next one's Connie Clifford's brainstorming ideas.
I've been brainstorming now, ever since I was told this group was going to be brought back together again. Um, one of the things I felt was kind of important, in fact, very important for us to do. There are so many rules, regulations, codes about the water and, and about the, the banks that the water touches. And it's different, I think, in different sections, and most of us don't have any idea where to get this information. And most people that live on the water have no idea what's going on. And I thought that's just something to brainstorm and put together. It can be a cheat sheet, or we can, you know, go to whoever knows everything about it and put something together to get out to the, uh, citizens of Ocean Shores and us, of course. So that was one thing. Um, also, I wanted to talk at some point in time about how we can get people invested in pulling the bad stuff out, like the, uh, pennywort, that it's good for nothing. And I want to, and don't start talking about making oil out of it. Uh, about pulling it out and how we can get people more invested in doing some of those things. Um, looking at the aerators. Um, Dave has aerators. We have aerators. We haven't got them started yet. But here's what I've noticed the most about the aerators. They are, my water's so clean now, I can see the bottom. And that means off the front of the dock, I can see the bottom. Now, what I'm seeing is the.
Weeds.
Is that what it is? The Brazil, you, you and I talked about this. Anyway, it looks like, I call it a hair feather, and I don't think that's what it is.
A loading.
Yeah, but I can see that, but I can see the bottom of it. And so it's, I think it's a good thing. I'd like for us to discuss it, talk about it, see what we can do about it, something like that. And the carp. I'm looking at you.
He said he was going to find out.
Yeah.
I did, I did.
James has got some things he would like to, to talk about, maybe now that I've kind of conned him into it. Um, anyway, I thought if everybody would come up with some things that they want to talk about and that we can start making a list of things we want to do. Um, I was on this board before, not very long, cause then it was, it was stopped for reasons. Um, I didn't really notice us doing much of anything. And mostly people talked all the, um, Latin terms on things instead of what can we do? And I really, I'm just hoping we do stuff this time, get busy, do stuff. That's all.
I second that.
And I just had one of those things, can this group have a Fresh Waterways Advisory Board Facebook page?
So the Parks Board mans their own Parks Board Facebook page. The city has no control over it. So I don't see why you guys couldn't.
Meeting minutes, future agendas.
Informational things.
Informational things on what we think it pull, what we think really shouldn't pull, or whatever we want to do, having a Facebook page.
Long as that's not a secretary's responsibility.
Because, you know, several of us.
Yeah, we can have, you can do many, many people managing it. So I mean, I think that's something that would be beneficial for the people, especially the ones that are on the water. We can get it out to them saying, we now have a Facebook page. Come here and you can post questions. You can do, we can, we can post information, that type of thing. And I just think it's something that's pretty much a free item that's easily maintained and usable with the citizens.
The plus of info.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Anything else on that?
I know in Utah, one of the big ways, there was, I mean, Utah's a lot different maybe than here as far as like announcements and different things like that, because, uh, the churches that are there are like, really, there's a lot of them. And, uh, but with the churches around here, like, let you, let us do like announcements, like if we dropped off like an announcement, if we, is that a way that we can utilize the community?
Yeah, that's possible.
Yeah, probably.
Cause I think that one of our biggest goals is to educate.
Let people know that the board's here and what we're doing.
Yeah.
You know, if you guys want to make a little quick paragraph and say, hey, you know, we now have a Facebook page, blah, 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 for information. The radio station will read that.
And we can put that also, put that also on the main page of the Ocean Shore City page.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest you might want to book a radio slot, to be honest, like a regular time where, you know, every month you come in and update people on what you're doing. Water quality, all that stuff.
Cool. That's a good idea.
Can we give you?
Be my best friend much longer.
I am.
Wonder if the TV station would do that too. We could talk to.
Up to Daryl.
We may have to pay them. We're having to pay them for CEC, for the city market.
Oh, Nicole, will you take care of that? Any other ideas brainstorming?
If people could just come in every week with something, yeah.
One thing I was, uh, interested in is, at the meeting, the, uh, city council meeting the other night, they talked about buying this Trail King tilt trailer and what it could do for machinery and stuff. But is that something that can be used and taken to different locations throughout the, the, the city around the canals and lakes to when they're using this harvester? They can just put it on the tilt trailer, let it take it and dispose of it, come back to where that harvester doesn't have to take so much time just moving around to dispose of stuff. Can that be used on that?
Depends on the rules.
I haven't seen it, but.
But there's, they're, it's not enclosed and they're, they're invasive weeds, so they can't, they have to be in an enclosed.
I mean, you could still put it on a trailer and.
Especially tarp it. Yeah.
If it's doing, things with weed access, where you can get.
Right. Places where you can get in, but I'm sure around the city, around here, there's plenty of places that are still open where you can get in.
We have a, we have a dump truck, dump trucks too, the loader. Last year, we did that for the vetner that is doing it. And we did, there were a couple times where he was backed up and had too much and he was like, hey, can you guys? And we sent the loader and a dump truck down. So yeah, we can do stuff.
Well, they bought it. Go in our recycle.
It can also, it can also go in our new biochar kiln.
Yep. Yeah, I can.
Got us in the biochar.
But, but potentially.
We have a section that we dedicate in the back to dry them out. So, yeah.
No, 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 it's just, I hadn't thought about it until this now, but that's another way to get rid of the weeds.
Uh, next up, we have board member reports. Connie, do you have anything?
Forty reported.
Jeff Owen, anything for a report? All right, James.
I, uh, I called Fishing Game, like I said, I was going to, after we met last time, and I talked to Steve Caramount. I don't know if you guys, anyone here knows that name, but, um, apparently he was a guy that was with Fishing Game back when the carp were put in the lake. And so he has a lot of history with this area. And it sounded like that was kind of, uh, something that they weren't uh, really advising us to do. And so it sounds like, uh, you know, he, when I was talking to him, it sounded like he was a little bit apprehensive and giving me a lot of information just because he's dealt with, uh, some pushback from us as a community. So, um, but he said he'd be willing to send stuff out here and maybe even have somebody come out and talk to us if he wanted to, if we were interested. But I didn't want to pursue it more until I talked to you guys to find out, like, how much information do we really want about the carp? And the damage that they're doing.
On the, on the carp, did you ask him if they were willing to do a DNA test on any carp that was caught?
No, but I can. Why would they do a DNA? Just to see if they're reproducing or?
They only had a lifespan of twenty years. They were sterile when they were put in.
Yeah. It sounds like they put.
They're not sterile anymore. Bring a carp in, or did the carp mutate? And years ago, they told us that if we were to catch a carp and send it to them, that they would do DNA testing to determine that. And then, if I remember correctly, depending on what that result was, they, at that time, they were willing to help us take care of our carp. So, I think some more questions to him on just how much are they willing to do, other than just come out and talk to him about it?
Well, when I, when I was talking to him, I mean, you know, he was just saying that the city really pushed to have the carp put in originally, you know, what was it, like twenty-five hundred carp and then another five thousand or whatever. So there should be at least three thousand plus carp in there if they're multiplying. And so, uh, he said that he, there's reports that they started doing reports and they could see that the bass and the perch and all the other fish, they're destroying the habitat of all the other fish that live in the lake and the waterways, like, and all the other fish are declining and, and the, the carp thing's just not working. So my understanding was that we got the carp in through some adoption program or something.
It was the, people donated money to buy the carp way back when. It was, um, donations to purchase them.
Wow, it doesn't sound like it was a good idea to put them in. Hindsight. Now we have to figure out, we have to figure out. Yeah, now we have to figure out how to get them out.
Yeah, now we need to.
They're ruining everything.
Are they suggesting they're totally eradicating them and getting them completely out?
Well, I didn't ask them those questions. He said that his suggestion was that they would never put in, so I'm assuming so, yeah.
There's a lot of other areas throughout the country that have gar, carp problems like that.
Yeah.
They are.
Yeah, yeah, they're not native here and they're killed all, they're killing off the native fish that are here.
What James doesn't want to say is, it was people in the administration here that, that insisted that they be put in. And so it was pretty hard for that group to say no, because of who it was that was asking. And then when they, when he came back and he said, this is not a good idea, you don't really want to do this. These people insisted, and so it was done, but.
And then, and then like two years later, another five thousand were brought in, just as like a. Here you go. Right, sure, yeah, you know, it's, it's worth a try, but if, if they're, yeah, they said that they're, they said that they're ruining the habitat for all of this, all of the fish, so. And they've steadily seen a decline in all the fish, you know, other, the habitats, so.
Like the water quality is, right.
Because they're eating.
Does someone in here want to go out? I mean, you can't fish for them, you have to net them.
Well, and that's, that's.
You can arrow them.
We could. We, we could change the ordinance though.
Just still, for the grass carp, yes, that is that, but we still have an ordinance within the city, no country.
Right, but if we could change the ordinance to bow hunt, uh, fish, carp.
Only.
Cause those arrows aren't loose. Those arrows are on tether. And I know that back when this came up in the past, there was some contention against it, that they were finding arrows in the lake and things like that, but.
They found arrows that looked like they had been shot up and came straight down.
Yeah, with tethers on them though.
Cause we, we recovered some of them and.
Usually you gotta, I, I have that set up and I have them.
Yeah.
You can retrieve them, you know. I'd be more than happy to get a sample fish if I get the okay to use my bow.
Be happy to.
Your fishing, I'd like, and have, come out and ask, and point out, ask, if we supply one, will you do?
He's, he said something to the effect, and I don't know all what was, because I wasn't even here, but he said something to the effect that, that he had gone and changed all of the ordinances for Duck Lake specifically, and like really went out on a limb for the community here. And then the administration basically kicked him into, you know, chops and said, forget it. And so he's really not that excited to work with the city. But I told him there's new administration. He said there's some people in his office that would be willing to do it too, so. But I, and he, he did say that the carp thing's going to be a contentious issue here, you know, because of some of the people that want the carp, regardless of them destroying all the other habitat around in the area.
I mean, you're obviously not, you're putting, you know, weeds and the weeds are growing and we have the fish, we've lost all the fish.
Right, well, and then they eat everything and then they, you know, and that, and they don't even digest all the food. So half the food is, you know, it's just, it's bad. It's just, oh, after.
You should have a bow hunting tournament.
We should. I second it.
Bring a bunch of people in town.
Anyway, that's, that's all I have is, I, I'll reach out to them and find out more, if that's the way the group wants to go.
I was just going to recommend, go ahead and reach out to them and get more information. And at the same time, you can even look at the ordinance and text. And if you want help with that, I'm absolutely here to help you.
Yeah.
Comments from Wildlife Department would be very helpful in getting an ordinance changed.
How do we go about getting an ordinance changed?
You just bring it forward, so you can bring it forward, a council member can bring it forward.
You have a draft drawn up.
Right here.
So would it be, do we need to send it to the council member in writing? Or can I just talk to?
You can talk to.
Richard?
Like you. Bring that up in council.
If you have an idea of what you want it to say, you should put it.
Right, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll find out. I'll, I'll find out and then we'll go through it.
Put a framework, a draft framework together without the details. And I'll take it to council.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll spend some time with Steve or someone from his office and find out, like, you know what can be done, but.
I do something in mind.
I want to have an arrow, have to tie it on, an ordinance, so you don't find three thousand arrows.
They're on a tether, but any.
They specialize those kind of things.
Yeah, they have to be, yeah, they're specific. It's a, it's a fishing rig, made for fishing. So I'm surprised they were somehow in the lake. They're, mine doesn't come off, like.
I don't think, should change that too. Snag and, and bow. If you want to get rid of them, let's do it right.
Tournament. Get them out.
Yeah, just get them out. Dip netting thing where people stand along this side of the bank.
Yeah.
It's not a smell.
They're a lot heavier than that smell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Janet Grant, anything to report?
I was just going to say, we should somehow register the people who choose to use the bows, maybe, somehow.
We'd have to have a license. You'd have to have a fishing license regardless, so.
Well, they have to buy a tag. I think they'd have, you have to have them buy a tag that that sets them apart, that they not only have a license, but they buy a tag to, to shoot the fish.
Okay, I'll get, I'll find out what fit. Or is that something we do as a city, or is that something Fishing Game would have control over as a state?
Fishing game, you just have to have a fishing license and you can bow hunt them.
And then the city would, and then we would say the city would want you to register?
Oh, really?
There's a lot of times.
Help us get rid of them.
Yeah, just have a weekend event or something.
Lot of places on fish like that.
Thirty thousand people in the shell come down to bow hunt in Lake Ocean Shores.
Yeah, gonna float that one out, boss.
Like those, I can picture whatever.
So we have to change the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No hunting. There's no hunting ordinance.
Even if it was just like a special event.
I, I'd like to make a comment. When everybody starts talking at once, with my hearing lost and hearing aids, I can't hear what's going on. For my sake, please take turns.
Uh, next up, Jay Bosch.
Along with what Connie was saying, trying to figure out what, you know, people living on the canal, what weeds they can take out. People have been told, well, you can't take anything out, or you can only cut it down, you can pull them out. We've been told, I looked online and seen, and it's online, it says you can pull out the reeds, so.
But some of them are, uh, help with erosion control too, but, and I don't know which ones either, but.
But it's something that needs to be put out, because everybody's getting different, you know, it makes messages from everywhere, and it needs to be put out for the people living on the water to know what they can do on the waterfront. And then another thing on waterfront, uh, is on these, uh, bulkets. You know, some of them are dilapidated, falling in, and they've been told by the city they can't do anything to repair them. Made to stop. Now what sense is that?
Excuse me, shoreline, because it's living on the shoreline, is that?
It's on the shoreline in the canal, but I mean, if it's falling in. It's on the shoreline in the canal, but I mean, if it's falling in, they should be able to repair it. But they've been told not to.
And the same thing goes for a lot of the docks. Um, there's some docks by us and they've been rotting out for ten years.
All over.
All over. Horrible. So if there was, maybe we can talk about something to, if they have to get rid of those. We can go around and pull them out. I don't care, but get rid of them, get them out of the water.
I have a question for Frank as the mayor. As a city council liaison, when we were talking just recently about pulling the weeds around your property. It's an area that I researched. So can I voice what my research found? Uh, uh, and what I, I, reason I ask that question is as liaison is guidelines say, don't uh, uh, get involved in the conversation. Ecology has stated specifically, it's in their ordinance that if you are clearing a safety area around your dock, that's permitted. But you cannot pull the weeds along your bank just willy nilly because they're there, the, the weeds there help protect against erosion. Uh, so the area around your dock, uh, it's a safety issue. And yes, you can pull those weeds and you know, how much room you need for your boat, ten, fifteen feet or so. Uh, uh, so that's ecology's answer and, and James can perhaps verify that when he next call talks to ecology. But that's what I was told a couple of years ago.
And that's who would know?
The college emails. The college has rules.
Do you believe there's stuff that's invasive like any worms you can take out anywhere?
So there are, as Penny worded, what's the right word I want? There are uh toxic weeds. Uh, yellow iris is one of them. Uh, and yes, you can pull that anytime.
And reeds? What about the reeds?
No, the reeds aren't, reeds aren't toxic. So cattails, cattails are, are, they're great for protected shoreline.
They are.
Anything else, Jay?
Nothing else.
All right, Dave Royce.
The only thing I have is um the pontoon boat that was sinking. Anything? And the other thing that is a concern of mine that uh we probably will, we should address in future meetings is just general waterway hazards, trees, branches, everything over the waterway.
We should invite Marshall to that meeting. When it comes, yeah, when you see on the agenda, can we invite Marshall?
The, the big one is um, what is it? Fish trap loop? I mean, you can't go out through there without, with my dimity up without hitting branches.
Especially if you've got two boats going.
And yeah, if you've got two different people coming by, it's really hard. And there's a lot of them that are growing now.
This way.
We should do that. We should do that at the next meeting because obviously voting season is picking up right now in a big way. So yeah, we should, we should hit that now.
May I comment?
Of course.
Corporation speaking here. First of all, it's corporation. We do have the equipment to go out and do clearing up the limbs along them and everything. We have all the equipment that's there. We have our permits and everybody to do it. Our problem is volunteers that can help with this.
You got a whole bunch of volunteers.
Um, we're not opposed to organizing a work party. We need to do the survey to see which areas need, I understand Bishop Canal is a major.
The worst.
And half canal, it needs to be looked at too. So if.
Asking us is hard to get in.
I'm not, I'm not doing my vote in there.
You we, you know, a survey of the waterways to, cause it's, it's a lot of work. It takes a lot of time. We, we don't have to wait. It's just anytime someone wants to go out, you know, a work party and at least, you know, four or five people. Cause you have people on the boat. You can only have so many people on the boat for safety reasons and also when you put the branches. And then usually we have a place where we unload and then we have unload people to help unload the branches from the, um. I mean, yes, it is past time for work.
How often you guys usually go out in a corporation? Like, what, what all? I don't, I'm not familiar with what you guys do exactly. I know you guys go out and said.
Hasn't been anything done since COVID. So, but usually the corporation and what we're, we have a report coming up.
Okay, I'll wait.
If Dave's done. Uh, Jim, do you have a report?
I, no, I just, I just question. We're talking about doing a Daniel Boone thing with, with the fish one at a time. Uh, is there an effective eradication?
That's a good question for.
Yeah, you can poison the lake and.
That's what I mean.
Fix the oxygen. Water and it suffocates the fish.
Okay.
Fish pop off to the surface all.
We don't want to do that.
Could ask them to leave nicely or.
Where are they gonna go?
Rehabilitates lakes from time to time and they use that product and it takes the oxygen out of the water.
All right. Uh, next up is the Ocean Shores Fresh Waterways Corporation Report with President Jim Edwards and Treasurer Phyllis Brink.
Okay, um, so the corporation's been around since nineteen ninety-one and it's a volunteer organization. We have equipment. We have boats. We have saws. We have. Days old, we had people that, two sets of people. We had the trustees who ran the, the corporation. Then we had a, a group of volunteers that came up and worked on the water. And we try to schedule those and have some time and have control on it. We have two pontoon boats that belong to the corporation that's used for that. Um, they, as far as going out and help some people, you know, recover docks and stuff like that. But primarily what we're concerned with is the navigation of the water. The trimming of the trees over the waterways is a big deal. And they, I don't know, uh, uh, Richard and Phyllis can probably tell you more about how often they usually go out, but they're scheduled in, you know, we just don't, uh, you know, get show up and go, but we will schedule them, ask for volunteers. Uh, we have chainsaws. We work real closely with Marshall. I think he was really the one that decided whatever it is, because sometimes you'll have a tree that's hanging over the waterway. And you, there's, there's procedures you gotta go through to cut that tree or trim that tree down. And we've got the permits for, we got a, uh, a permit from the state to do it. And I believe we have a permit with the city to do it. I'm not sure. But so, so right now we're kind of trying to determine our resources. Our biggest resources uh issue i- is the volunteers right now because it, it, it takes a lot of people to do it, but not a lot of people each time. And when you get into the season, when you're working on it, uh, you know, you could be out in water a lot and you get four or five people on a boat, it's a full boat, you know. So, and we're uh doing a preliminary survey and we're gonna be talking to you, Jeff. So we, we, we do an independent survey. Uh, take a look at the waterways to see what we think our portion of the work should be, what we can do, you know, because we're, we're not part of the city or of anybody else. And then right now we're, we're working on uh under determining some of the requirements we're gonna have on the uh working with the city and what that relationship's gonna be like. And, and I think we do a lot of work with you. I'm fairly new in the president position, so a lot of it's so sparingly. Right now, we're, we're trying, one of the biggest things is to see if, if we have enough resources to continue that, that type of operation. We got the equipment, but we, we're working on getting a volunteer group to back us up and get out there. And uh we work quasi-independent from everybody else. We're responsible to the board and to the city and probably to the, to the county also.
Do you, uh, what's the youngest volunteer that you guys can take?
Oh, I thought you were gonna ask us right now. It's about seven. Say to anybody on the boat that under eighteen.
Under eighteen, okay.
Because um they fill out the volunteer form and then the city covers the insurance.
You guys don't have a volunteer slot.
Volunteer form.
We, we've recently changed that to sixteen. Have you ever helped her? So. So uh.
You might be, you might be able to use that. Plus, the kids need volunteer hours to go. Yeah, but.
That was our problem before is because they weren't eighteen.
But see, there, my, my cert, my question there would be safety. Cause you're on a boat in the water. You got chainsaws. You got, you're pulling trees out, you know.
It could be your land.
Yeah.
You have to work something up with the city to take that responsibility for the managing that because we don't, as a volunteer organization, we don't have that, that type of authority.
Yeah, we'll have to make sure that um all of the volunteer forms are filled out. If you haven't done a volunteer form already, any of you, do it. Because even with the work that you're going out there doing and the surveying that you want, they'll be needed. Would, it would be, it would be.
Is that online?
I have sent it with your welcome emails. I believe I've sent the.
It's on our website too, though.
It's on our, it's on our site, isn't it?
It's also on the ocean shores freshwaterways.com, which is the, our website.
I was gonna recommend.
So, yeah, I should get mine updated too.
I was gonna, you might want to run it by Dave, our new chairman. And I bet there is a way that we can get some volunteer. There's a lot of younger people. And when I say younger, this is so sad. Forties and fifties.
Thirty, Connie.
Uh, well, and but I, well, and I'm in my seventies, but I can get out there and work with the best of them. So there's a lot of.
That's what we're doing when I say we're determining our resources. We're, you'll see stuff in the, the paper and stuff coming up on, on volunteers and stuff like that. But we gotta determine how it's gonna work with inside of our corporation. Cause you know, nothing's free. And so uh and we have people that join the corporation. There's a, and we use those fees to buy fuel and tools and, and repair the boats and stuff. But uh.
But it can go onto our new Facebook page that James is gonna do.
We also have a face, Facebook.
You're good on that. I might want to talk to you.
On Facebook?
Yeah.
I hate Facebook, but Dave's gonna, Dave's gonna take care of our Facebook.
Not wishing a server coming up. You'll see a little thing asking for um of volunteers for the corporation for um what master and secretary. And then also there's a hopefully Stephanie has moved to the end of the week. Um, about the weeds, information about the weeds out there. That um as far as information goes that you want to get out, um, we have, we used to do newsletter on some, once a quarter. Um, I am more than willing to share those with anybody who wants to pull information and bring in to community club papers. Stephanie is more than willing to work with us on it because I, I talked to you for a while.
Stephanie Morton.
Stephanie Morton, who does.
Oh, yeah. The more info, the better.
Probably it's just hit, that hits everybody instead of just people on the waterway. Because you know, there's a lot of people who don't live on the waterways who use the waterways. But you need to look at informing everybody.
We have a lot of experience with working with the weeds and then like trimming the trees and all that. There's a lot of experience in the organization. Justice getting old, you know, we're looking for those forty and fifty year olds. And we've got, we got some.
Those lively seventy year olds. Yeah.
Anybody that's lively. But, but we're, we're working it right now. But it's, it's gonna be a, a decision made here in the next month or so and we'll get with the city on there.
So I'd like to chime in uh as a corporation member, and yes, I'm a liaison, but what I wanted to say is the corporation has two uh potential boat captains who have experience at doing the harvesting and could act as the supervisors for an inexperienced crew. And that's Grant Schaefer and, and myself. Grant has many more hours on the water doing that as the captain of the boat than I do. But I have also captained the boat uh during those harvesting adventures. But.
Like the harvester versus.
I, I, I said harvester is the.
The harvester is higher than the question.
Yeah, I, I, that was, I misspoke harvester. I was.
We, I think we, we worked that one today.
But yeah.
Well, I say like, there is a lot of experience.
We should be more than willing to discuss options with you guys. That's what we're saying.
Well, whoever we got then. Right now the preparation will just be four people.
Three of them.
That's, that's all we got.
All right.
We need to look to the future.
Uh, Council Liaison reporter, Richard Wilson.
So uh, I don't have anything from the council. That does to, do you guys have anything that you want me to take back to the council outside of this loosely drafted uh ordinance that you're gonna create and send to me and you not have to wait to the next meeting? Once that you think that you have it, but you're probably gonna do that in a meeting, I don't know. Send it to me and then, and then I will send it out up to the, to the council. I'll present it to council. But if you have anything else, now's the time to, to let me know.
I mean, would you talk to the council and see if we're gonna get harvester?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, uh.
I have one thing to go back to the city and the council or whatever. Status of waterway treatment. Is there any update or anything on that that's gonna happen?
We have a, we have a meeting, I think on Wednesday with Herrera to discuss the bid documents and those will go out very shortly. They, they asked if we wanted to work with the same contractor that did it last year because he has the knowledge and, and they gave all the reasons. And I said, we were so unhappy that even if he turns a bid in and his low bid, we'll probably throw it out. So.
With a dollar, we don't want them.
Exactly, exactly. And we all feel that same way. Um, the mayor feels that way. Scott feels that way. And I think um both all the citizens, corporations, and I think everybody in Ocean Shore. So, um.
Yeah, with, and the other question I had, one thing that was mentioned before was that they had a optional uh chemical treatment.
Yes.
To be used outside of.
Of the fish window. Yep. That will be part of this information. And so we'll have a, like a year long contractor. You know, June, June to June with the contractor that's selected so that it's not like just the summer season.
Personally living on the water, I'd like to see the water treated like in May.
Yeah.
So we're clean by the fourth of July.
Yeah.
Have all the people coming out here.
We keep reinventing the wheel a little bit each year because we're doing more and getting better. And so it's pushing us into June every year. But next year we'll probably start treating, well, we'll probably be treating almost year round with this other resource that they're, they've told us about. And you know, potentially harvester, we're talking about that. And their big master plan is going to be coming out. We should see a draft in June, this group here. And we'll make sure that the corporation gets it as well. And that will, I, I think, have just awesome information and recommendations in it. Um, the meeting that you're going to be having with them is that strictly administration. Okay. I was gonna ask if a rep from this could be there, but okay.
And I only, I only have one other thing for the city and maybe for the corporation. I don't know who does it. The speed limit signs?
And the water?
All the signs.
Yes, the boys.
All the signs.
Boys that are out there.
Please put them out. Yeah, but.
We, we need to have some put out on the uh north, the Grand Canal, north of Ocean Lake Way. There's none out there. And about four weeks ago, there was a guy on a boat who came down the Grand Canal, him and his buddy on their fishing boat at full throttle.
Yeah.
That's been in the south end too. They've been.
Coming out full throttle underneath the bridge of Ocean Lake Way, everything.
Yeah.
And I sounded my foghorn at him and he looked at me and he goes, oh, I couldn't get a boat number.
There's been a couple of. Either something.
There is nothing in the North Canal that says.
Of course it too. I mean, because you know, they used to have signs along the side.
They still do some places, but they're pretty, pretty need me.
We don't have anything up on the north side at all.
Um, and then the buoys were just repositioned um last.
Last year.
Yeah, last year. The swims and everything. And we secured them really good. We wanted to double everything up. But if they have moved, we need to know that they've moved because the corporation can go out and reposition those into the correct place.
I'm just saying we need some on the north side.
They were moved to Duck Lake, right? Correct that they were moved to Duck Lake. Um, and the, but we don't know, do we have, we have a duck lake to the north or just? It's Grand Canal.
There's something on the uh, as you come up from underneath the bridge on North Duck Lake.
That's the matter there. Right.
But on the Grand Canal. Right, but on the Grand Canal.
North of Ocean Lake Way.
Even on the, well, the only one on the south end, there's two on the south end, one that goes to turn to Menard.
Right.
And the other one that goes on the turn to.
Fish trap loop. But in between.
In between. Yeah, it just goes.
They get past the racer climb bridge there coming in. Do not abide by the uh, no way. From the shore, they they zoom right along and it's 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 not good. And there is no signs other than the buoy going into. Now there at I'm going to.
So it's just it's it's just a matter of that. It's probably some more than you'd be put itself.
All right, anything else? All right, next up is public communication. Anybody in the room? Anybody online, Jane?
Well, yes, Miss Nicole. I just wanted to say I'm really happy to to see the new freshwater raise board all together and hear all the ideas. And it sounds like everybody's really done, oh, it taking some action and getting things accomplished. So I'm just like, I'm happy to see what's going on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jane. All right, future meeting date Monday, July seventh, twenty twenty five, two P M. Right here in the library meeting room. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
On paper.